Did you get yours to the internet? Here?
Not here.
He's gonna fix it for me, yeah. Oh, you okay? Is it okay?
I wanted you to see him. See, I wanted to get it so that I could use it later. And I can't buy it anymore.
You can though, they say you can buy that.
Yeah, they have thirty bucks a month.
Oh, yeah.
On top of the thirty bucks a month they already pay. Don't really need to use it in the car or anything.
Yeah, if you had it in the car, you'd have to.
Yeah, definitely. I told them, I told you to let me know when you're gonna do it. Hi, y'all, can I show you? My dad. You calling me gorgeous?
Nice, it's nice to be out here. It's like you know what it matters. But I'm here. I'm here and I'm actually playing.
Well, as long as they push that past, we're good.
Thank you.
Pleasure, ladies and gentlemen, to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Evening. Like for us to observe a moment of silence for the following individuals. David A. McDougal, a retired employee of the North Syracuse Central School District. Marissa I. Allison, attended schools in the North Syracuse Central School District. Sharon A. Bold Allen, a 1976 graduate of the North Syracuse Central School District. Vanessa M. Loyson, a graduate of the North Syracuse Central School District. Merle A. Capria Curl, attended schools in the North Syracuse Central School District. Mary T. Barr, a 1967 graduate from the North Syracuse Central School District. Joanne M. Henderson, a retired employee of the North Syracuse Central School District. Teresa Joyce Hodeling, a retired employee of the North Syracuse Central School District. Carlton M. Cummings Jr., a 1961 graduate. Leona J. Benedict Kruger, a volunteer for the North Syracuse Central School District Voting Nights. And Ivan Goyette Hiegel, a graduate of the North Syracuse Central School District. Our first presentation is Spotlight on Art, Music.
As we make our presentation, we'll have visual art. These are all works done by the students of the North Syracuse Central School District from elementary through high school. But first, I'd like to introduce Ms. Darcy Bowden and the Junior High String Quartet.
Ladies and gentlemen, for all these students.
Phenomenal.
Excellent.
I'd like to bring up the people who are going to help with the presentation. Cheryl Dryson from Rockford Middle School is going to do the elementary through middle school art. Chris Jones is doing eighth and ninth grade art. Jim Van Hoeven is doing CNS art and also the Fangler Graphic Arts Lab. From music, we have Becky Hall doing elementary through eighth grade. And Tony Mayo from CNS High School. We have seats for all, doing the instrumental music program. Certainly, we could dim the lights, why not? For just a moment, I'll leave the agenda on and then I'll quickly turn it off. Cheryl's going to talk for briefly, I've told each one, two minutes max, on the case seven. Oh, okay, sorry. The case seven art curricula that she's worked so hard with, with many of her colleagues, Suzag, Jennifer Slifka are two that come to mind. First, Cheryl. Sure.
Hi, thank you for the opportunity for allowing me to speak about the art program tonight. When the kids are in the younger grades in the elementary grades, they take the time to develop proficiency in working with materials and to learn how to use the art materials to create a work of art that represents either a study of media or representing a point of view. As the kids grow up and they move through the schools, then we can, and they develop the proficiency in the younger grades, then we could work with them to get a better worldview of art and why the different cultures created art and why people keep going back and looking at all these wonderful art treasures that we have. When we renovated our library about eight years ago, we had the Egyptian theme in the library and my students created the tiles. They're still on display today. The students worked from official model, just like the ancient Egyptians did, and through using this official model and graphing the image. Everything had to be to specification, there was no such thing as personal expression in art. The students were able to create a piece of lasting art that embodied math, social studies, art, science, and gave them a real-life understanding of how to use the Common Core curriculum and the 21st century skills. So in sixth grade, it's a seamless way for us to integrate art history so that way it enlivens and really makes more concrete connections with what the kids are doing in their sixth grade curriculum in ELA and in math and in social studies. And I think it just works out really well for the kids, it's a great opportunity for them.
Chris Jones from North Syracuse Junior, hi.
Hi, thank you so much for allowing me to speak tonight. I have the eighth grade program and the ninth grade program primarily that I'm working with now. I've been blessed to be able to work in all of the buildings, K through 12. So I'm pretty familiar with all of the curriculum. We were given the opportunity several years back now, I believe it's nine years ago, to take the Studio Art One curriculum and rewrite it to allow students to be able to take a course called Media Arts, which is computer and darkroom-based photography, and to also work in Creative Crafts, which is an arts and crafts movement-based program where students work in the traditional materials such as ceramics, silk painting, metal smithing, all of the old traditional materials. This is a wonderful opportunity for the students because not all students enjoy drawing and all students need to have that required Studio Art One credit or a music credit to be able to graduate from high school. So we are able to give them the opportunity to work in three totally different sorts of courses to earn that credit. And we also work very closely with the different periods that the students are working in, in social studies. We're using applied math. They start to learn all sorts of higher-order thinking skills because they're given problems to solve, they're not given answers. It's an area where students are really able to express themselves. We talk about the different types of careers that they can go into, something beyond just becoming a starving artist. And a lot of times, we also give them a lifelong love of the arts, hobbies that they are really interested in pursuing for the rest of their life. So it's a wonderful opportunity for students.
Jim Van Hoeven will do CNS and also the Fangler. Again, this is artwork done by the students of the North Syracuse Central School District this year, referring students.
At CNS, the art department's focused on several aspects. The first is our breadth of program. Having a diversity of program is probably one of our biggest strengths. We have a variety of classes, traditional, as well as what we call new media, such as digital photography and graphic design and video, which have been expanded greatly in the last few years. We focus largely on college and career readiness. We prepare students to go on to post-secondary institutions in the arts, to prepare them for the job market. A lot of people aren't aware of just how vast the job market is in art and that the vision of the starting artist is really antiquated and not true at all in today's world. Almost eighty percent of our AP students achieve a three or higher in the AP, which prepares them for the rigors of college work. We expose our kids through our art club trips to Boston, New York, and Philadelphia on a rotating basis, exposing them to colleges, universities, and other cultural events. We bring in college admissions officers to review their portfolios and we also bring in various visiting artists as well. Another focus we have is student recognition. Probably one of our biggest venues for that is the Central New York Classics Art Awards, which we're very proud to say this year was probably our best year ever. Students received ninety-one individual awards, including a school record fourteen gold and nineteen silver keys this year. So outstanding efforts on the part of the students and staff. They also work several local and regional venues, such as many different contests and any way that we can get the students' work out there, get them recognized and reinforce their desire to go on into the arts. We're also focused on community involvement, both within the school and in the community at large. Our video production students produce our daily video announcements and our students have active roles in the yearbook and in the Arts and Literary Magazine before that was cut last year. In the broader community, the graphic students have designed each of the past five Swamp Run t-shirts, Swamp Rat Run t-shirts. And they also produced the design for the Town of Clay and several other projects. We're constantly fielding requests from the community at large to do designs and things and we take those on with the appreciation that we have for the community. And then lastly, the Keith Fangler Mac Media Labs, and that's plural now. The original lab of twenty-seven computers has been supplemented with a new twenty-four station lab, which supports the photography program. And I cannot even begin to tell you how much these labs have impacted our students and provided them with opportunities to prepare their portfolios, to get the recognition that they need, to maintain their involvement in the community and to most of all, provide a technologically relevant experience so that they are ready and prepared to go on past CNS. You know, we're really grateful to the Fangler family and Rampage Systems for all that they've been able to do for our students with those labs.
Thank you.
Yep.
Now we'll switch to music. Becky Hall will talk briefly about the case, the curriculum that we designed with core standards in mind. The teachers are going to distribute a new version. We've just started working on this, or the final version, in January. As a matter of fact, Becky and her team will be working tomorrow on the documentary seeing kind of a piece of artwork in this creative space.
Thank you, Dr. Martin. Good evening, Dr. Dice and members of the board. Good evening, audience. And what great audience etiquette we have from our little ones right in the front. Bravo, you guys, that is awesome. So, in 2006, as Dr. Martin said, a committee of us, classroom music teachers from grades one through eight, we began to design our own Spire curriculum using the National Standards for Music Education, both content and achievement standards, as well as the New York State Standards for the Arts as a guideline. We decided to focus our curriculum, which is in the white books, in eight conceptual areas, including rhythm, form, timbre, melody, harmony, styles, tempo, and dynamics.
Three years ago, after we finished this curriculum document, we decided that we needed a consistent music series book from first grade to eighth grade. Some of the buildings were still using the music book that I used at Cisro Elementary. So we implemented that and then the next year, music was cut from twice a week to once a week. So we had to take the curriculum and we had to cut it apart again to reflect the changes in music, but still keep our new series books. And that's the document that you see in front of you at this time.
So this document has become kind of a living, breathing document for us because after we thought we were finished, we discovered the new New York State Core Standards, Common Core Standards, and we took a good look at especially the ELA standards and how they were formatted and we decided that that would be a nice way to show ours as well and also to be consistent with that. So we're taking this document that you see now and we're making some alterations to have it fit more and look more like the New York State Common Core Standards. We're really proud of this document because we truly came up with this as a collaboration of teachers and it's one hundred percent original to North Syracuse Central School District.
Okay, and then lastly, what we've been working on lately is trying to make this look a lot like Common Core Standards. So instead of just looking at, this is what grade one looks like and this is what grade two looks like, we are spiraling it, just like Common Core, starting with grade one all the way up so you can see how the concept goes from the easiest form to the most difficult. So this is the yellow packet that you have. And this is a work in progress, we just started this. So we hope to finish it by the next couple of weeks, I would say. So if you look in grade one, you can see this is what rhythm looks like, it's a beat. And then as it goes into the more grades, the higher grades, second, third, fourth, and on the next page, five through eight, you can see how it gets more complicated and what the students are actually learning.
The teachers will be working on this tomorrow. Lastly, the instrumental band program. We're also doing a very similar thing in both the band and strings. Band is done, so I asked Mr. Mayo to come. But we are doing strings this week, as a matter of fact. We started it two weeks ago and we're gonna finish it. So you'll see what he's produced.
Yep, go ahead. Thank you, it's very nice to be here with you this evening. On January twenty-third, seven of us in the band department got together and updated a curriculum that was originally put together in 2006. The positive feature of this get-together, I thought, was really the collaboration between all the levels. We had representation from elementary, middle school, junior high, and high school. And that's a very positive thing when you want everybody to buy into something together. The focus was on updating the competencies or the scope and sequence and you have an example of it up there and I'll talk a little bit more about that in a minute. We believed that we needed much more specificity by instrument. We had competencies in a generic way before brass, woodwinds, and actually by level. But we wanted to get a little bit more specific with that. There found the appendix A of the document that we created. The definitions sections of the document was also updated to match the changes we made in the competencies. If you take a look at the example we have on the top, you have the left side, you have the six levels that we defined and you'll notice they're not specific by grade, they're actually by developmental level of this learner. The seven areas for assessment are defined along the top. Specific requirements within the grid, very similarly, you can see the entire advancement throughout the development, again, in front of you. What you see in front of you, we have defined as the bottom level of what we expect everyone in that level to be able to do. So these are minimum competencies we have. Again, what you see in front of you is an example of the flute. We created one for each of the instruments within the band level, brass, woodwinds, and percussion. I think I speak for all of us involved when I say that this is a very positive first step and what we see is an ongoing process. We see a lot of things that we would like to add to this as we move forward. So we're looking forward to continuing development of this.
Thank you.
Thank you. Good job, Doc.
Dr. Martin. Questions? Students that were here tonight?
Yes.
Violins?
Correct.
Started violin in what grade?
They started in third grade.
And why is piano not offered as one of the musical?
We do have keyboard, which is the basics for piano in seventh grade in the middle schools. But we do not have piano lessons as such. Kids would have to do that privately, what we don't offer is a school district. I'm unaware of any district that does in the county. That's obviously a basic instrument.
I just wanna make a comment. The art program and music program in this school district, I just believe, is outstanding. I think it's one of the best in the county. I talked to other teachers in the county. Every art teacher that I worked with, from Bob Wigan here at Pitcher Hill right through Suzanne Zog, were top-notch. They worked with kids, they put in a lot of extra time, just awesome. The music department, starting with Betsy Benson here at Pitcher Hill right through to Karen Siemens at Cisro. I can't say enough what you have done really the last two years. Your department was reduced, before Dr. Dice was here, it was reduced in half, K through four. Last year, fifth through six was reduced in half. But you people stepped up to the plate and have done outstanding. You see all this work with the Core Curriculum and all of that? It's unbelievable. I believe there were, how many of you, six K through four? Six people, we had twelve. We have six people in a school district of close to ten thousand students who did all of this work. That's just fabulous. And I can't say enough about the students. There's some music students that I know that are in the audience. Vinnie sang the National Anthem the other night at the basketball game. We have students that stand up to do that, the volunteer, the band. They also get a lot of awards throughout the county. They didn't mention that, I don't think, tonight, but they are. And also our string instrument, K, you are correct. It is second to none. And I would say to all the board members, you have to go, I don't know when it is, Dave, when all the string instruments from grades three through twelve are at the junior high and you'll see our program is second to none. Thank you for letting me comment.
Thank you very much. Anybody else?
The only thing that I was going to say too is, you know, we mentioned the music program, but I'm looking at three people over there that I know put in morning program hours and stuff like that too, which is a big part of the day. So, and you know, it's not just the curriculum, but it's the character education that you guys put in also. So I just wanted to say thank you for that. And then also, I have to say that I had both Mitt Jones, which he was amazing, and Mitt Dryson, and they both kind of hooked me on art back then too, so I wanted to thank them.
I thought they graduated with me.
They were student teachers.
I also like to say that the arts programs in our district have been a real pride. I happen to be the mother of a student who found his first success in the art room and who learned his timetable, music, because he had certain perceptual difficulties and music enabled him to get that sequencing down and to learn those math facts. And there are many links between the arts and the sciences. And I'm on the board of the Iverson Museum, arts organizations in the community, through each stage. And I think we take for granted sometimes the arts as extras. They are not extras, they are enhancements and they provide different pathways for kids to learn and to facilitate. And I thank you all for your very important work.
Great, thank you, great job.
Thank you.
Hey, Donna, this is your first time in the hot seat.
Thank you. Thank you, Martha.
Well, I know that Mr. Blue was pretty detail-oriented and I'm sure he left you templates and models and instructions and all that good kind of stuff, so...
He sure did. Let me say that...
Welcome to your first...
Thank you, this is my first presentation to the board and it's an honor and a privilege to be here. The presentation we just saw with the great musicians and wonderful artwork is a testament to how special this district is and so I'm really, really happy to be here.
We'll see how you feel about us after this process is over. Are you gonna tell us all about this through song or...?
No, you know, I can't sing to save my life, so... This will not be near as entertaining as Dr. Dave's presentation. Well, I'll tell you, Wayne, these are big shoes to fill, I'll do the best I can. The first topic is fund balance and while I recognize that the board and most of our administrators are very comfortable talking about fund balance, I thought if it's okay, I'd like to move through the topic slowly and speak in simple terms because I think in order for us to understand the financial condition of the district, we really have to start with understanding fund balance. So what is fund balance? Fund balance is the money that we accumulate over time when we don't spend our entire budget. As everybody knows, we ask the taxpayers to approve a budget based on the amount of money we think we're gonna spend in the year. But some years, we don't spend all that money and we end up with a fund balance. And that's kind of our rainy day fund, our extra money that we deal with surprises and issues that arise. And so let's take a look at where we ended up last year in terms of our fund balance. At the end of last year, we had about $7 million in unrestricted fund balance. And unrestricted means there was nothing drawing on those funds other than our ability to use the money to support future operations. However, at the end of the year, we had made some commitments that we hadn't actually spent the money yet on and those are called encumbrances. So we had $1,605,000 encumbered of the $7 million for things we had done last year that we hadn't paid for yet. In addition, in connection with approving this year's budget, it was decided to appropriate $1.6 million of fund balance to support the 2011, 2012 budget. So at June 30th, 2011, we had about $3.8 million of fund balance, our rainy day fund, our extra money here at the district. And that represented about 2.8% of the district's budget for the year. The state of New York allows schools to keep 4% of their budget in the form of fund balance and we ended the year with 2.8. Let's take a look at this year and see what this year brings. So again, we started the year with... Yeah, sure, Jackie, sorry.
So the fund balance is also used for the lag time between when school starts and when the state... when the state sends us our money, so there's that used for fund balance, too?
Well, yes and no. I mean, in, the fund balance truly is, when we do our annual budget, let's start with that, when we do our annual budget and the taxpayers approve that, for example, $136 million budget from last year, that includes all the money that we're going to spend over a 12-month period. And so, and you're right, the state pays us their state aid, we get different monies throughout the year, and we're able to manage the cash flow of the district through, sometimes we do revenue anticipation notes or bond anticipation notes if it's relating to a capital project. But the fund balance, really, in the most simple terms, that's our rainy day money, that's our extra money we would use if an emergency came up. And we've been in, I mean, I say rainy day money, I know today was a beautiful day, but it's pouring rain on public education right now, and so we're lucky to have the $3.8 million that we have. I don't know if that helps your...
Yeah, so, you know, we break a couple windows or something.
Well, it's more the unexpected costs associated with running the district. For example, we could have special needs children move into the district that have some unique characteristics that we didn't plan on. We could have major repair, emergency repairs that would need to be done. There's a variety of things. And just to put this in perspective, for a household making $80,000 a year, if you had a 2.5% fund balance, you'd have a savings account of about $2,000. So, you know, it's not a small amount of money, but it's not a pile of dough either. I mean, we're not, we're actually in a pretty modest position having 2.8% in fund balance. And let me take into next year and show you what this year, I should say, what this year looks like.
Just to kind of answer your question, though, if we know at the end of a school year that we're going to be short of monies to start up the following school year, we would usually do a revenue anticipation note.
Right, right.
Not take it from the fund balance.
Okay.
Sorry. Go ahead.
So, so this year, yeah, thank you, Pat.
No, well...
This year, we're, so we started the year with the $3.8 million, and the finance team has just done some projections for the year, and it looks like we'll have a positive variance of $400,000 for the 2011-2012 year. And what that means, when we compare our revenues to our expenses, we're going to be able to contribute $400,000 more to the fund balance this year. In addition, I'm recommending that, given where our fund balance is, that when we do the budget for the 1213 year, that we use $600,000 of fund balance to support next year. So that would mean, if we did that, and I know that's up for discussion and much deliberation, if we did that, we'd end the June 30th, 2012 year with $3.6 million, or about 2.5% of our projected budget in our fund balance. So I guess the message I'd want to give you, this is awesome that we have $3.6 million in fund balance, but it's only 2.5% of our budget. It's not as much money as we certainly could use in these difficult times.
And by law, we're permitted to have as much as 4%.
By law, you can have as much as 4%.
Which is also not a great deal of money when you compare it to the size of our budget.
Exactly.
And not only last year, the year before, and I believe the year before that, we decided to use a little bit more fund balance to help offset the cash flow.
And I think, I think one of the things that's happening to all schools is that as budgets have been cut, your ability to generate fund balance is less and less. And so it's going to be harder to come by as the years go on, so we have to just make sure that we're very judicious when we use it. Let me talk a little bit about reserves, and reserves are different than fund balance. Remember, I told you that fund balance was unrestricted. Reserves are restricted to a particular purpose, and so we have some reserves as of this moment right now on our books that I wanted to just brief you on. The debt service reserve has $2.3 million in that account. And if you'll remember, this year, for this year's budget, we committed to use $1.8 million of our debt service reserve to support the budget. And so there won't be much of that, you know, we'll have about a half a million of that left at the end of this year. Tax certiary, you know, we, North Syracuse is a very large district, and so people can test their property assessments, and what ends up happening is, when the assessments are done, we apportion our taxes based on those assessments out to our taxpayers, and then if they renegotiate their assessment, it negatively impacts our revenues. And so we have a reserve set up to cover those shortfalls, and that's our tax certiary reserve. We have a general liability reserve. We also have a reserve set up for re-turfing the field. And at some point, we'll need to look at putting new turf on our field and doing some work on the stadium, and so we've got what I hope to be the community share of that project already in a reserve. And then we have a workman's compensation reserve. We spend about $1 million a year as a district on workman's compensation, and workman's compensation claims can be pretty significant. And so we have $1,001,000 in reserves to soften the blow if there's a large workman's compensation claim that couldn't be handled in the normal budgetary process. So that covers fund balance and reserves. Are there any questions on either of those topics? I know this isn't as exciting as music and art, I'm doing the best I can. All right, the next topic is the governor's budget, and then let me, let me start by saying that the governor did what he said he was going to do. Governor Cuomo said he was going to give an increase of $805 million to public education, and that's, in fact, what he did. Unfortunately, $250 million of that money is in competitive grants, and so we don't know the timing criteria and process yet for getting those grants. And obviously, we've got that on our radar, and we're going to make sure that we're all over that when, as soon as we can be. But what you're going to look here, what you're going to see here in front of you under the column "listed budget" is the governor's proposal for state aid to the North Syracuse Central School District. And I've compared it to the adopted budget that we're under this year. And I'll just note a few, a few variances that are worthwhile to point out. First of all, you'll see the variance in what's called excess cost of public aid of over $1 million. And just to explain that to people, that's our, that's our special ed costs. What the, what the state says is, you know, we provide services based on an IEP to our special ed population, and if our services go over $28,900, the state helps us with those excess costs. And our population is, every school district in New York State, we have special ed students that are, you know, we spend thousands of dollars on, tens of thousands of dollars on, and some that we spend, you know, upwards of $100,000 on. So to the extent that we're over $28,900, the state gives us excess cost aid associated with that. And, you know, I saw that variance, and I became troubled to wonder whether we really were going to get $2 million, and the team did some research, and we determined that the $2 million was an appropriate number. It looks like we're on track to get $1.8 million this year. And as you can imagine, the special ed population changes from year to year, kids graduate, we have new people moving into the district. It can be a difficult number to predict, but based on our historical performance over the last three years, $2 million seems reasonable. The next, the next large variance is in BOSI's aid. You only get BOSI's aid if you use BOSI's services, and so this is the correct number for our BOSI's aid. It's $440,000 less than we expected, however, it's, it appears to be right on the money based on the services that we used with BOSI's. So, yes?
It's based on services.
Right.
And, you know, based on what we use statewide, that $285 million of the money that the governor is giving us is based on the incentives to use additional BOSI's programs and to do some transportation buying and to do some, you know, building. Why, why is that so much less than we expected to get based on what we spend?
You know, I don't, to be honest, the answer is I don't have a great answer for you, other than I think we, in putting our BOSI's budget together last year, you know, we anticipated that the BOSI's aid for that would be, would be higher, and I don't, I don't have a good answer as to what it is. I can, I can do a little more research on that, but...
I thought we anticipated that the BOSI's aid might be lower because they were, they were talking about changing the aid formula. And based on that, I thought we had estimated conservatively, and that if anything, we would get more this year than we had.
Yeah, there's a little, little twist, as you see, if you could look up at the excess cost aid, I'm not sure if you're aware, but we run a lot of our special ed programs through BOSI's. And so there's a bit of a flip-flop between BOSI's aid, and so if you add the two of them together...
You come out with the right answer.
You come out about $600,000 more next year than we had this year, but it's not as, the variance isn't as significant.
You explained it.
Okay.
Yeah, I understand now, thank you. I wasn't, because I knew that when we were building the budget, that we figured it would serve, that that would make sense, because our excess cost aid involved those programs that are BOSI's programs.
And so you get, you get the aid on your students through the excess cost aid, even though you might be running a particular program through, through BOSI's.
Thank you.
Now, one of my questions pertaining to this is, we, we make the assumptions consolidation of services is BOSI's, because I believe that's how the governor stated some of that was consolidation of services, correct? So what doesn't necessarily mean BOSI's aid?
It could, you could go in partnership with the municipality, do blah, 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 and share the cost, and that would be a consolidation of services. Or with another district, you were going to run your transportation program with the neighboring district, that would be a consolidation.
And I probably should have noted in the very beginning that you see our foundation aid didn't change at all, that hasn't changed in a number of years. But what the governor has done is they have adjusted our gap elimination aid. And so at first blush, this, this is kind of confusing in that the gap elimination adjustment is a negative number, it takes away aid. So if you can, if you look at the 42.3 in foundation aid we got last year, $11.2 million was taken away in gap elimination adjustment. This year, we're getting the same aid, but we're only getting 10.3 taken away.
Do you want to explain what gap elimination is, based on the state's deficit?
Yeah, but the bottom line is that the state is trying to cut back on state aid to schools, and so they're, they've, there's so much debate right now about how school aid should be distributed around the state, and there's, frankly, there's a lot of people advocating for changes in the formulas and how that aid is distributed. And since they can't reach consensus, but yet they have to cut budgets, they've left the foundation aid the way it is, and they've come back to schools and they've taken away aid through the gap elimination adjustment. You know, in our case this year, though, we're effectively getting $865,000 more in aid as a result of that adjustment being lower. So our total aid is $1.4 million greater, or about 3.1% higher. And that's pretty important. If people remember, I don't know if everybody in the audience are watching it from home, remember when the newspaper came out and they showed state aid for all the districts in New York State? They quoted us at this 6.2% level, and I'll explain that in a minute. But the real increase in our state aid to support programs is 3.1%, because the $1.8 million is two years of state aid on Smith Road at about $900,000 a year. So we're getting last year's aid and this year's aid this year. And so, and just so you know, we have debt service associated with that, so it's not, it's not much upside for the district. It's just, you know, how we pay our mortgage.
And that was the point that I was trying to make about the governor's increase not really being the governor's increase, because some of what shows up on the bottom line as an increase is not really an increase, but reimbursing us...
Restoration.
...for expenses that we incurred in previous years.
Yep.
So that while on paper it's a 4% increase in aid, in reality, not just for our district, but for all the districts, you take out that money which was owed to the districts because they had already spent it based on promises that were made last year, and then you take out the money for the consolidation grant, and in reality, 4% is not 4% at all.
Right. I think, I think what I would, what I would draw your attention to and the audience's attention to is, as I mentioned, this $1.4 million is really all the additional aid that we're getting, and unfortunately, we're losing in jobs money. This year's budget, the 1112 budget, includes almost $3.2 million of federal jobs money. So we're losing that aid, and we're only getting $1,004,000 to cover it in additional state aid this year.
And the 3.179...
That's the...
And 40 positions, 40, 40, you know...
Yeah, 42 teaching positions.
42 teaching positions. And you have half, half the increase, and even if all things were equal, we're in the hole stark.
Yep. So this is a good, a good segue, I think, into, if you don't mind, I'd like to take you through a presentation that was given to the board on December 15th, but with, I have some updated information for you. December 19th, I'm sorry. In your December 19th meeting, you folks talked about the tax levy cap. And I should start by saying that the tax levy cap is not a cap, it's a threshold. And, and what the governor came up with, and the legislature came up with, was a formula whereby schools would run their numbers through this formula, and if you go over the percentage that they develop, you need to have a supermajority. 60% of your taxpayers need to approve your budget. If you're under the percentage, you need a simple majority, one more yes vote than no vote. So the tax cap isn't really a cap, it's more of a threshold. And so this calculation takes us through what the, what our tax levy can be using the tax levy cap formula. And I'll, I'll go through this quickly, but please stop me if I lose you. The first line in there, the 72,777, was last year's tax levy. The tax levy is the amount of money we collect from our local taxpayers. You know, we think about funding schools, we get the tax levy, we get state aid, and we get some sales tax revenue and other miscellaneous revenues, but between state aid and the tax levy, that pretty much finances the majority of our budget. So this tax levy is the amount of money the local taxpayers paid to finance the school this year in the 2012-13, 1112 year. The formula includes a thing called the tax base growth factor. And the concept there is, hey, if your district grows, the tax base grows, you're probably going to need a little higher levy to, to support the schools in your area. And so we get that increase. And then, then the formula looks at our pilot agreements, and it says what's happening with pilot agreements. For those of you who are not familiar, a pilot agreement is a payment in lieu of tax agreement, and it's usually an incentive for a business to come into your area. So in this particular case, our pilot agreement for this year is higher than our pilot agreement for next year. So they, the formula considers that change. It also looks at our tax levy to support capital projects. And in this case, since Smith Road is coming on this year, our capital project, I'm sorry, our capital portion of the tax levy is less this year than it will be next year, and the formula contemplates that difference. And then finally, the formula looks at the amount of money that we spend on TRS, Teachers' Retirement System, and ERS, Employee Retirement System, and it says for the amount that's over... And it says, for the amount that's over 2 percent increase, you can take that amount and increase your levy by that. So this formula, which the state says is the amount of money you need to run the school or get from your taxpayers to run the school, is $3.2 million more than it was last year. 72.7 versus 76.0 gives you 32, 3,285,000, or a 4.5 percent tax levy limit increase. And that's an update. Last time you guys looked at this, it was 3 percent. So since the 19th of December, we've learned a few things from Albany in terms of how they want this calculated. But I want to leave you with, the tax levy cap is not a tax, it's a threshold. The 4.5 percent is what Albany is saying is a reasonable amount to expect the local taxpayers to pay, given the various attributes of your school. Go ahead, Senator.
Explain. People might not know the difference, the difference between the tax rate and the tax levy.
Sure. Sure, that's a, that's a great question. The tax rate that you pay is often quoted as a rate on $1,000 of assessed value. And that's, that's the rate you apply to your assessed value. And obviously, as everybody knows, schools don't have anything to do with property assessments. We simply do our budget, and we divide that budget by the full value or true value of the properties in our district. And then that comes up, that's what develops the tax rate. And the tax rate is applied to your assessed value, and that's what your tax bill is. The levy is simply the dollars that the district is collecting via property taxes. So your tax rate, when you multiply it by your assessed value, if everybody in the whole community did that, it should add up to $72,797,000 for this year. And this 4 percent would be simply the, 4.5 percent would be the increase in the levy, in those levy dollars. When we get back together again on the 27th of February, I'll have a nice chart that'll show, you know, how we look at tax rates, so that that'll be clearer for the audience.
This is a difference from what we had. And I read over your report that you gave to the board. Now, I'm Finance 101, so I need to...
That's okay, this is confusing stuff.
So basically, the governor, in his proposal, we were going to have a tax levy, no more of 2 percent. But because of conditions that you've talked about, Smith Road, TRS, ERS, our growth and our tax base, we are allowed, as a district, to go to 4.5.
That's a good setup.
My concern is, and we did this last year, whatever we talk about, I'm hoping will be communicated by the website to the community. Because the community is expecting only a 2 percent. And I know people that when they see 4.5, they're wondering what we're doing.
Yeah, I think that...
So it needs to be, it needs to be explained in simple terms to the community on the website as we go through this.
Let me chime in. So our conversations around the table is focused on how we can be very transparent about just that fact. So I'm hoping that since we don't have small, small people in this meeting, hopefully we have lots of people who are actually watching the meeting, so that they're continuing to stay abreast of what's going on and what's the updates that we're giving regarding the budget. As well as we've talked about, you know, what we can do to also get the word out. You know, a weekly or a monthly budget summary update, putting information on the website that's clear and articulate, and it doesn't necessarily present more confusion.
Right.
And so, with each budget meeting that we have, it's our intent to continue to give regular updates about what we talked about today, going through the process. And although some may think it's redundant, it is to do just that, to ensure that the community understands the difference between what they thought and what actually is, and that people have the opportunity to be able to hopefully hear explanations that make sense. We've also talked about other ways that we can potentially get feedback from the community and others just about, you know, what ideas, what are some things that we could do differently, look at differently, given where, excuse me, where we are with our deficit.
And just because the tax cap is 4, doesn't mean we need to go to 4.
Well, you've got to remember too, Bob, that that number, that 76.082, that's based on what we did last year moving forward to what we're, to this year. So that means there's no change in what we did from last year, and that's what our number would be based on, based on our potential.
Well, that's a, that's a perfect segue.
That's a threshold that exempts, that exempts from that 2 percent...
Right.
Certain things. And I think that's what we have to stress to the community. That the capital things that you've committed to are outside that cap. That, that the other exclusions for the TRS and the ERS are outside that cap. There is a commitment that you've made that you can't get out of. They're, they're, they're there, they're cast in stone. And I think that's, that's what we have to emphasize, is that the 2 percent cap is not a cap, it's a threshold. And that this 4.5 percent represents what, things that we have already committed to that we have no choice about, that are outside that 2 percent cap. They're in the order. And I think that, you know, that's something that we have to emphasize, because I know there are people who think, well, you're pulling this out, and you're violating the law and whatever. Unless they understand that there are certain expenses and certain commitments that fall outside that cap.
Well, one thing, you know, what Dr. Dice said, I mean, I think we just, we're, we have to be transparent. And these are, these are complicated concepts, so we're willing to just keep talking about them over and over again. And I think we're just going to need to do that, and hopefully people will...
Exactly, they want a scaffold learning.
Yeah, that's right, that's right. It's a perfect segue into, I did update the preliminary budget information with the information from the governor's run this. So let me take you through that really quickly. And I think this emphasizes maybe our current situation. We have a preliminary budget of about $143 million. That's a budget increase of about $6.7 million in increased costs. And the variety of things that are included in that, in that increase, fuel costs. And remember, I mentioned earlier that we used quite a bit of our fund balance to support this year. Well, as I said to you, I'm recommending we don't use quite as much. We used quite a bit of the debt service fund to support this year. Those are big reductions in our, in our revenues, and that they're included in the $5.7 million in revenue losses. So we've, we've also got, as per the numbers we looked at a moment ago, a state aid increase in 3.1 percent in aid. And we've got our increased building aid, which represents two years of Smith Road. But if you take our increase in spending and our, and our reduction in revenues, and you add to it those, or subtract from that the aids that we're going to be getting, we've got about a $9 million shortfall that we have to work on. If we get a 4.7, 4.4 percent increase in the tax levy, that'll still leave us with a $5.8 million required cuts to the budget. And, and just looking at that, this is, there's a lot going on on this chart, so bear with me a second. I just took this and said, okay, how much would we have to increase the tax rate, the tax levy by? If we got a 1 percent increase, we, that would increase our levy by $727,000, and we'd still have to cut 8.4 million in spending to make up for the $9.1 million shortfall. We'd only need a simple majority to do that. The chart goes all the way down to if we got an 8 percent increase in our taxes, we'd have a levy increase of 5.8 million. We'd only have to cut 3 million, 3.3 million to get to our 9.1 million. But we need a supermajority to do that. So this gives you a sense of the play between expense cuts that we would make as a district and increased taxes to our, to our residents. So obviously, this will be a document that we discuss quite a bit as we go through the budgeting process.
I think we also have to talk about the consequences of failing to get the supermajority down the road. I think that that's something that we have to discuss in some detail. Because the results of a failed budget vote with a supermajority would require draconian cuts on top of the cuts that we've made.
That's two, that's two defeats. You can go back one time to the second budget, but if it's defeated twice, you cannot raise the taxes at all, zero.
And I think, I think, you know, the first step is a shared understanding of our current situation. Before we start talking about cuts and getting everybody panicked, the reality of it is, let's just understand where we're at. And I think, once everybody's on the same page in terms of where we're at, where we're at, I think you'll have productive, constructive dialogue about where we go from here. And our, you know, the administrative team here, Dr. Dice has made it very clear, we are going to be here to answer questions and make presentations and share information and be very transparent. We're committed to trying to get people to understand what we're up against.
Well, one of the reasons that we set aside the first hour of each one of those meetings was so that we could, we could have open dialogue with anyone that would like to speak. You know, one of the things we talked about last year was the fact that we're getting to the point where our, our community, and I think Dr. Dice is approaching this in a great way, by having listening sessions and developing a strategic plan, so everybody in our community on all levels has a stake in deciding what it is that's important. What is, what do we want to keep, what don't we think we need to keep? Because it's, we're getting to the point where our, our community has to determine what they're willing to spend for public education. And the least dependent we are on state aid, the better, the better off we are. I mean, if you look at some of the communities, when you go listen to Mr. Timms, Dr. Timms talk about the imbalance and inequity of funding across New York State for education, and he tells you about a, about a district in, on Long Island that spends $53,000 per student, and they have 900 students in their school district. And we have, we spend $14,000. And when, when there's a 2 percent aid decrease, it only affects them in small dollars because the majority of the dollars that they spend or that they raise come from their taxpayers. So I believe, I think we all believe that, that we have to involve everyone in this process, and we have to determine what the best bang for the buck that we can give, the best education to our kids by, and how much we're willing to spend for it. It's coming down to that. We're talking about a 9 point, what was it, $9.8 million?
9.1.
9.1. And if we get, if we get the aid that they're saying we're supposed to get, we're still looking for $5.8 million. I think Wayne, before he had left, said that equates to about 80 positions or something like that.
Yeah, if you get a 2 percent increase, you have to eliminate 96 positions.
Right. So, so I mean, we have a lot of work to do. I can tell you, as, as I sit here, and I think we're extremely sensitive. Everyone around the table is extremely sensitive relative to how much costs in, in school taxes. We all live here, some of us have students, some of us don't. I think we represent a gamut of all of the taxpayers in, in our school district. And I can assure, as I try to do every year, is that we will do our absolute nutmost best to give, to give the best program that we can with, with the least impact on the children. Because that's, that's what we're here for. And, you know, I appreciate, Donnie did a great job, I think, for your first one. I think you did a great job.
Thank you, sure.
I have one question, and that's, in the governor's budget, it calls for us picking up a share of preschool and special education within our budget. That instead of being shared by, by the county and the state, that the districts would be expected to pick up a third. Do you know where that is? Because, I mean, that's, that's a big nut.
Yeah, I don't have information on that at my fingertips. I can certainly get you information on that.
And I can tell you, Donna was pretty much saying a breath of everything. I can tell that we'll be meeting probably daily to talk about changes to the budget and things that are coming down from the governor's budget.
When did his amendment...
I'm sorry.
What's the draft date on the governor's amendments to his budget?
I don't know, but I could find, find that out for you.
And can I add that some of the other conversations that we have, are having around the budget is the fact that, so just because we're struggling with a gap lends itself to the fact that we have to be more creative about how we use our dollars, given that we have less. And it was interesting, in terms of the conversation I was having today regarding the strap plan of do you back off innovation because we have less dollars? But the hope is that because we do have less dollars, that it will encourage stakeholders to come to the table and embrace that concept as we look at how we can do things differently. Once again, we're keeping in mind that what's most important is, whatever decisions we make have to be what's in the best interest of our students, and ensuring that we stay as far away from the classroom as we, as we can.
The final item I had on the agenda was just to pass out the budget books, which I believe, Donnie. Thank you.
They got them.
Following Wayne's color scheme. Thank you, Donnie, for taking care of that.
Thank you.
Please call me if you have any questions.
And participation in government students, come on up, we'll sign your forms. You'll all go do your homework.
Every time.
Anyone around the table can sign for you.
Thanks, huh?
How are you?
Good.
Anyone?
New semester, huh? And you must be a senior, because this course is needed to graduate.
You got it.
Okay. We have no comments from the audience this evening. Any board committee reports?
I do.
Go ahead, Jay.
I do. I had the opportunity to attend two advocacy sessions. One was run by the New York State School Boards Association, and it featured Rick Timms from the statewide school finances consortium, SFC, I have to remember that. And then the other one was through New York State United Teachers, and it featured Billy Easton with the...
Alliance for Quality Education.
Alliance for Quality Education. And it was interesting, because they both had the same sort of message. Talk to your legislators, tell them what is going to be missing with the way the state is, is cutting our aid. And, you know, they, they tell us we're getting an increase in aid this year, but frankly, it, they're, Billy, Billy Easton and Rick Timms are calling it a restoration, because it's not anywhere near what they cut last year and the year before. So we're not really any farther ahead with the increase in aid. They're supposedly just throwing us a bone. The board members and the superintendent are invited to the legislative breakfast that we do have, and all our legislators are invited, and that's February 11th on Saturday morning. And it's, it's a good idea to go and to listen to what your legislators are going to say about this. And we also have a North Syracuse Education Coalition, which has a Facebook page that we will try to keep updates on, on different advocacy things that are going on.
I'd just like to chime in on that. The Alliance for Quality Education was formed years ago in response to, to the fact that aid in New York State is not distributed...
So, we're not really any farther ahead with the increase in aid. They're supposedly just throwing us a bone. The board members and the superintendent are invited to the legislative breakfast that we do have, and all our legislators are invited, and that's February 11th on Saturday morning. And it's, it's a good idea to go and to listen to what your legislators are going to say about this. And we also have a North Syracuse Education Coalition, which has a Facebook page that we will try to keep updates on, on different advocacy, things that are going on.
I'd just like to chime in on that. The Alliance for Quality Education was formed years ago in response to, to the fact that aid in New York State is not distributed equitably. And they won a huge court case that, that took them the better part of six years to win. And in the second or third year of getting some of the monies that the court said were owing to the school districts who had been shortchanged by the aid formula, the, the economic climate changed drastically. And so, not only are the school districts getting the restoration of aid for the previous inequalities, they're not receiving those, aid has been cut back. And even with this restoration, it will not bring us up to the levels, even without the settlement of the, the law case, to what we were getting four years ago. So, 4% is not really 4% at all. But it's what we have to live with. Now, what we want to advocate for, and what we ask you to go to your legislators for, is to support the statewide school finance consortium's proposal for an equitable distribution of state aid to all the school districts in New York State. Right now, the formula favors wealthy school districts and does not equitably fund education in low and middle range wealth school districts. In all of, of our section of the state, even the wealthiest of our districts does not fall into the category of the wealthy district throughout the whole state, not even close. We have an interesting chart that maybe we should bring to one of our meetings that shows where the districts in New York State fall in terms of wealth. We can spend the same amount of money, and if it's distributed equitably, we will get a bigger bang for the money that we're spending, a bigger bang for our buck. So, you know, one of the initiatives of the statewide school consortium and, and other related organizations is to put pressure on our legislature to adopt a more equitable and fair way of distributing the aid dollars that we have.
I was going to ask if we could just save any of the other comments till after we do Dr. Dice's spotlight here. Yeah, so he...
Get laid.
I'm looking at bedtime. I don't know. Yeah.
Sorry about that.
Go ahead.
So, at the last board meeting, we talked about the fact that we were going to do things just a little bit differently, and that we wanted to begin to acknowledge some of the great things that our students and staff are doing. So, I have the pleasure with the board of acknowledging, well, a group of students. And the first is, Ashley, come here. So, does everyone hear me? Sorry, getting on purpose. So, the first is DJ Willman. Can I say his name? Yes. Nice to meet you. I love that student. And stand right here, I want to read a couple things. So, for the past few years, DJ has made his personal adventures, collecting blankets for donations to the Syracuse Rescue Mission. DJ was originally inspired by a story he seen last year about, that story, about the homeless people in Central New York. Since then, KWSB RE, his school teachers, parents and community, has supported his blanket drive. And it's been running from, it ran from January 1st to February 3rd. Last year, DJ ended up collecting and presenting to the rescue mission 200, and I'm not sure what the count is this year to catch up. And next, we'd like to recognize the fine Olympian team. And hopefully have advisors here in Scott, Sammy, and Marty Minor. And as soon as, I'm going to speed on everything. Garrett, are you in the audience? Michael? Tyler? Adam? Rachel? Richard? Adrian? Evan? Mark? Tom? Tom? Brandon? Jeff? Jordan? And what we're congratulating them for is placing fourth at the regional, regional competition and qualifying for the state level event.
Dr. Dice? You got another one. Nick Costanza was on the team, too. Nick was. Yep.
So, I just like to say that we're truly proud of you guys, and thank you so much for hanging around with us and helping us. We're going to continue to do these because we know why we're here, for our young people. And what a great way to break out into the serious business of a board we acknowledge some of our base and that. Thanks for hanging around and doing the advisory today. Thank you.
First, I would like to congratulate the Cicero North Syracuse High School students that participated in the New York State Academic Council in the second three. Our team came in third place out of six school districts. Their coach is Teresa Rice, and there is also a retired teacher.
Pat Charissa.
She also, not only helps Teresa and her students, but she also is in the tabulation room, tabulating and helping both of them. I just think that's remarkable. Then, there's three things I have to say.
Sure.
First, I have, I, I fully support all-day kindergarten. And I, my question is, is all-day kindergarten, is there money in the state to implement this?
There is some conversion aid available. We haven't done that. I've done the calculations yet, no, for certain, it's pre-identified.
It's not $1 million to start all-day kindergarten?
I don't have the numbers at my fingertips.
Is that something, we can find that out?
Sure.
I can give the rest of this, don't get excited, sorry. Is there a way that we could ask the residents if they would support full-day kindergarten after the first year? Because it will not, we will not get the aid for them. And I was just wondering if, if, if we decide, if we could find that out, that's all, before we even try it.
If we could ask the residents?
Yeah, or the voters.
Put it up for referendum? I don't know if it could go on the, on the ballot, I think maybe, I'm not sure. I don't know how you do that.
I, I think that, so I, your questions are totally appropriate and revolve around the whole budget conversation. The better response would be that at the time in which we sit down to talk about some of the things that have come out of the conversations regarding the strap plan, and the conversations that we will be having about things that are considered as non-negotiables, then we can take the next step to turn around and say, if indeed, full-day kindergarten is a non-negotiable, and it's something that we want to move forward on doing, then we begin to do our due diligence in doing our homework to determine what is and isn't possible. Because there are a number of things that will come on the radar regarding what we want, don't want. And given that, you know, to your point, that it may be for one year of funding, and the question of asking taxpayers, when you see what's all up for discussion, you may decide you don't want to ask taxpayers about first day, I mean kindergarten, you might want to ask them about something else. And so, let's have that conversation in the midst of everything else, so everyone understands and we're having a full picture, or we have a full picture to really make an informed decision.
And basically, the answer is yes, pretty much.
Is it? Oh, is that what that, oh, was about, okay.
Isn't, isn't there something too, Don, in that, I, I remember, we looked into it before, and there's some weird wrinkle in how that conversion aid comes, and you don't get it until a year or two after you do the conversion, at, at least this was a point in time when we looked into it. Could, could we look into how and when that aid kicks in?
Sure.
And what the, you know, just so that we have those things available to us if and when we, and the community decide through that survey that we've done, that this is a priority?
Absolutely. I'll make sure that we're up to speed and know all the nuances of, of conversion aid.
Because Kay, that strategic plan may uncover the fact that the majority of the people who do want all-day kindergarten, and they might be willing to sacrifice something else or pay for it.
Or that they want to phase in all-day kindergarten, or that they don't.
Yep.
Thank you, Sam. My last one. Smith Road Elementary School. Could the board members see the punch list or the items not completed in the timeframe when they will be finished? And also, I need to know if there is money being held back because of this punch list.
We can get that information.
I don't think we've ever had that before, but concerned.
We've never gotten punch list items before, no. But we can get that if we wanted. Anyone else?
To piggyback on what Kay was saying, the, the full-day kindergarten, you know, Bob and I are getting antsy over here when we're talking about it. We can't help but get excited about such a conversation. So, that information is, you know, really, really important to me and probably Bob as well. But I, I'm getting just as antsy sitting in my seat here as we're talking about the budget stuff that Mr. Keegan has given to us. And the elephant in the room is that we were promised 4%, and we weren't given it. The spin that Assembly put on the 2% tax cap was that it was 2%. And now it's up to us to tell the public that we're not...
Of course.
You know, we're not liars. And it really, I mean, I, I don't, I'm, I was thinking that I was going to sugarcoat this, but I don't think there's really a reason why I should sugarcoat it, because we were put behind the eight ball. And I really feel, you know, and I don't mean to be doom and gloom, but I really feel that we're put in a position where our, our budget will go down because people don't believe that we're presenting a budget that is really within the rules. So...
Other than good times, Pat, we're put behind the eight ball every single budget.
But I think, I think more so this year than any year before. And, and I really, I mean, we, we're thrown under the bus enough. And, you know, this, we don't need to be stopped at Wegmans, we don't need to be stopped at basketball games and, you know, and so on and so forth, and be told that we're not operating within the rules because Assembly hasn't properly explained their quote-unquote 2% tax cap.
But realistically, I'm not sure anybody sitting around this table would be okay with presenting a budget to the community more than 2%. So, I'm not sure how much conversation we're going to have about whether or not we're in the rules or not. You know what I mean?
But the difference between the tax rate increase and the tax levy is, is the thing.
I mean, because it was bad enough last year, we, we went out and we said we were putting up 5.6%, and it was 2.1%. So, that was bad enough. I mean, we, we did our due diligence, and again, government outside of these four walls...
That's, that's going to happen every, all of the time.
But the good news, Pat, is that I, I really think that at least the local media, the local print media, the TV stations and whatever, have been doing a really good job of presenting what our plight is and what the situation is. And I, I think, too, the legislature is just playing dunderheads by asking for a raise right now for a part-time job at a time when they're asking else to take cuts. But, you know, comma.
But, but remember, this is only the initial stages. We've got a lot more conversation to go. And who knows what's going to happen? I think we just need to keep getting informed and keep looking at what we're, what we're seeing down the pipelines as far as the state budget and as far as what we can do. And the more information we get, the more we can make an informed decision when it comes down to approving the final budget.
But I, I do, I agree with you, but what I'm saying is that I think that, that we really need to put a concerted effort into educating people as to what this formula is, and, you know, the constant conversation. And I want to make sure that we don't, you know, sit back and, you know, I'm, I'm passionate about this, because this is really, I, I'm really concerned, because we cannot do two years of the contingency budget.
There, no, there, there can't, there won't be a contingency budget. It's not an option.
There's no such thing anymore.
There's no such thing anymore. If they, if they vote it down twice, zero.
Right.
It's, it's death and destruction.
Right. And that's exactly what...
And, and you know, Pat, we really, unfortunately, when, when the towns set their, set their rates, we, we, we did everything we could do to, to do our due diligence, as you say, to make sure that when we were done, that, that this is what we're presented with. And, and we have no control. The best explanation we can give somebody is that you have no control over how the towns set their, set their tax rates based on their assessments or their, their equalization rates or whatever they're, they're doing, depending on whether they're full value or not. I mean, you know, we, we have to do, as you said, our best to educate the people based on, so that they're seeing what we see, and that they understand it the same way that we understand it.
Right.
You know, because they have as big a choice to make as we do.
Right.
I mean, we, we, we agonize over, you know, I mean, 5.8 million dollars is a, what, 80 positions or 80, you know, or, or programs, or however it, it's going to, and we agonize over that. But that's why, you know, again, I, I think it's important, we had some emails going around about our meeting, and I, I think we should only, we should have our hour at the beginning of the meeting, and I think we should only set a time limit if we have more than the amount of speakers that would take up an hour. For example, if you have 70 people that want to speak, then they got to keep it to about 10 minutes or less, or else not everybody's going to get a chance to speak. Because at that hour, you know, but I, I think it's important that, that that meeting allows us that open dialogue, so if somebody...
And, you know, Pat, we really, unfortunately, when the towns set their rates, we did everything we can do to do our due diligence, as you say, to make sure that when we were done, that this is what we're presented with, and we have no control. The best explanation we can give somebody is that you have no control over how the towns set their tax rates based on their assessments or their equalization rates or whatever they're doing, depending on whether they're full value or not. I mean, you know, we have to do, as you said, our best to educate the people based on, so that they're seeing what we see and that they understand it the same way that we understand it. You know, because they have as big a choice to make as we do.
Right.
I mean, we agonize over, you know, I mean, 5.8 million dollars is all, what, 80 positions or 80, you know, or programs or however it's gonna, and we agonize over that. But that's why, you know, again, I think it's important, we had some emails going around about our meeting, and I think we should only, we should have our hour at the beginning of the meeting, and I think we should only set a time limit if we have more than the amount of speakers that would take up an hour. For example, if you have 70 people that wanna speak, then they gotta keep it to about 10 minutes or less, or else not everybody's gonna get a chance to speak. Because at that hour, you know, but I think it's important that that meeting allows us that open dialogue, so if somebody asks a question, it's not like the meeting here where we really don't, you know, to get the business that we have to get done, done, we don't have an open meeting per se. But in those budget meetings, I don't know, I actually expected more people to come and speak than what actually has. But again, I agree with you, because we look bad. But, you know, it's not that, you know, we just have to try, if that does happen to us, to make people understand that, that these are the parameters that we were making determinations under. We had no control over this in this, and we tried to guesstimate the best we could how that was gonna turn out, so...
We also really have to steel ourselves for the people that are gonna be passionate about what they think we shouldn't cut or what we should cut, or what they can pay or what they can't pay.
Yeah.
And the fact that, you know, we come up with this whole plan and then we backpedal on that when we see a little bit of extra money, and then it comes back to bite us later, we really have to be careful about how we do that this year.
Well, and too, you know, I think this, you know, I think Dr. Dice and I know, have had conversation about the strategic plan, actually budgeting to education versus educating to the budget.
Right.
So, you know, I think that this is gonna be very valuable to us, you know, it's, we'll budget to priorities, you know?
Well, we're there. I mean, we're in, we're in the ballpark where our community has to determine what they wanna spend for education and what they think, what they want, what they wanna see, how they want the children in our district educated, whether they have children in schools or not, and have the dedication and the wherewithal to say, yes, this is what we, I mean, we're getting there. If we, if we go down, I mean, how do we operate next year if we can't raise our taxes a dime?
I think Wayne said it back, shut the doors.
I mean, really.
We're close.
I mean, what would we have to cut? If 5 million is 80 jobs, 5.8 million is 80 jobs, what's 10 million or, what was the difference between last year's and this year? 9.1 million. So, that's...
Double.
It's double. It's a pretty bleak picture, if you think about it. I mean, I stay awake nights thinking about it, so...
Anyone else? Okay. Routine action items, any questions on any of those? Motion, Sandy made a motion to take them as a group, Bob seconded. Recommended action is to approve A, B, and C as submitted. All in favor? That's unanimous. Discussion, action item one is CNS Baseball Booster Club Baseball Wall of Fame and Paver Project.
I can take you through that, as you may have read from the memo and folks in the audience, the baseball program is doing a fundraiser where they're going to be selling pavers to maintain an area on the outside of the dugout where they're going to celebrate and acknowledge the success of past athletes and major supporters of the CNS baseball program, and that includes the former North Syracuse stars and the Cicero High School baseball stars, and proceeds from these efforts will be used to maintain the baseball facility and support the program in general.
Questions on that? Recommended action is to approve that request as submitted. Michael? Second, Sandy? All in favor? That's unanimous also. Sorry, I didn't see your hand up there. Item B is to approve the revised budget calendar. Dawn, I believe that's you also?
Yeah, we made just a few modifications to the budget calendar to make sure that we were in compliance with the requirements and of getting our budget vote information out prior to the vote, and there were net changes, and we asked that you approve.
Looking at this, the April 2nd board meeting is not on the sheet. Are we still having a board meeting? It's in the calendar, but it's not on the sheet. Okay, but all the regular ones are on here. Yeah, but I mean, all the regular ones are on here, and that one was not on here. You have the 5th, that's a regular meeting. You have the 27th, it's a regular meeting, and I would think we're definitely gonna talk about the budget since we're gonna vote on it the 16th.
Is that the vacation? Is that the vacation?
No, it's not vacation. I was just, all the other ones are on here, so I just...
Yeah, I think it was.
Okay.
Yeah. By mistake.
Any other questions? Recommended action is to approve the revised budget calendar. Jackie, second, Michael, all in favor? That's unanimous. See, you're supposed to just look at your microphone, look towards it, and then speak, and it's supposed to be clear with no back, with no feedback, right? Isn't that the way we were instructed as to how to use our microphones?
Yeah, it's correct.
It's okay, just tell them that we all know how to use our microphone.
We had our tutorial.
Okay. I thought that...
And I went ballistic.
Okay, acknowledgement of gifts. Sometimes, you know, when I look at these, it just, it just really makes me feel good about the kind of things that people give as gifts to our school district. I mean, you know, the Roxborough Road Middle School Fitness Club purchased several pieces of AV equipment and is gifting the equipment to Rox Middle. The equipment will be utilized daily in Rox Middle. The total cost was $2,337.21. There's two 50-inch plasma flat panel insignia televisions with the wall marks and extended warranties, two Sony DVD players, two Sony AV receivers, two pair of Polka Audio bookshelf speakers, and speaker wire. Maria Yankowicz, sixth grade teacher at Rox Middle, was granted from Target a field trip in the amount of $700 to the Most Museum in downtown Syracuse. The field trip will give students hands-on opportunity in science discovery. The recommended action is to approve with gratitude the gifts as presented. Bob made a motion, second, Tony, all in favor? And that's unanimous. The 2011-2012 non-resident health and welfare rates, those are rates that we have to set every year. Were there any questions or discussions on those? Recommended action is that the board approve the establishment of the 2011-2012 health and welfare service rates at 413.48 per pupil. Tony, second, Jackie, all in favor? And that's unanimous. And also, the non-resident tuition, this is an item that we have to put on the agenda every year. It sets the tuition rates for non-resident students that attend our school, and the guideline, in accordance and computed with guidelines, computed in accordance with the guidelines established by the Commissioner of Education. See, I tried to do that without looking at it. So, the 2011-12 rates are kindergarten half base, 2,137, full-day grades 1 through 6, 5,477, full-day grade 7, 12, 65, 30, special ed base rate at 15,652.
Again, 101 act now. Why would the rates go down? Kindergarten went up, the rates would go down, for our students, they're coming in from other school districts, and our cost is going way up. Is that, is the state the one that's setting these rates? So, the state is telling us...
They're telling us how...
That we have to take less tuition.
Most likely.
But the price of things is going... No, no, but I, when I saw this, I...
Isn't that something?
There's another one of life's greatness, Mom.
See, if you, it's going from three shells to like four or five shells moving at all.
The only question that I did have is, the special education that says it's a base rate, does that mean that if we add like occupational therapy, we bill for those different things?
Unless they tell us that we can't do that...
Or they tell us that we can't, then they tell us that we can't.
I mean, that whole excess cost thing, the thought that we would have to take the dollars out of our general fund to, not that, not that we don't wanna service students with special needs, but if a student comes in, I mean, we've had students in the past that we've had to create clean rooms for them, and it costs hundreds of thousands of dollars. If they take that away, that could be devastating. So, that's, okay, the recommended action, no questions other than what was presented? Recommended action is to approve that resolution. Tony, second, Michael, all in favor? And that's unanimous. At this time, do we need an executive session before we take up personnel items A and B? Recommended action to take A and B as a group? Tony, second, Sandy. Recommended action is to acknowledge A and approve B as, excuse me, approve A and acknowledge B as submitted, all in favor? That's unanimous. And I'd like to make a motion that we move to an executive session for the purpose of receiving an update on negotiations with one district bargaining unit, to receive an update on one legal matter relative to potential litigation, and to review the employment history of three individuals with no action to follow. Second?
To...
As long as it's a legal one, yeah?
No, a legal one, to discuss potential legal action in regard to a matter that came to our attention in regards to transportation.
Yeah. Did you get that, Connie? Okay. All right, did you second? All in favor?
Sure.
Nope. And we're adjourned. We're joined. All right, so, hey Connie, Connie, would you do me a favor? No, I'm not hanging on, sorry. I'm not hanging on. I just, if you could, I actually like looking at the picture rather than recording, recording, recording.
Here, another one for you. You'll see that I initial them, so you'll know where they're from.
So, how are you doing, Dr. Dice? How's the baby?
Nobody crying.
Well, is Michael sick too?